To draw your attention to the fire regulations which are on the screen behind me and the small screen up there, perhaps not, but they're on the screen behind me. Good. And the small screen up there. In case of a fire, we'll all run like hell and you follow us. Please ensure that your mobile phones are switched to silent and councillors, may I please remind you, to speak directly into the microphone and make sure that your card is pushed firmly into the console. Members of the public, I'd like to say as a committee, we understand that matters under consideration can be emotive, but please be respectful of those around you. Thank you very much. The first item on the agenda is the minutes of our last meeting, which took place on the 11th of January 2017 and have been laid on the table for at least 30 minutes. Are you content that I assign these as a correct record of that meeting? Thank you very much. Have there been any apologies for absence, Amy?
Thank you, Chairman. No apologies. I believe all members of the committee are here.
Johnny, good. Have members declared any interest before the meeting?
Thank you, Chairman. Councillor David Els has declared a pecuniary interest in item B1 as he is the agent. As a result, Councillor Maurice Byham will take over as chairman for consideration of that item.
Thank you. Members, do you have any non-pecuniary or disclosable pecuniary interests to declare? Councillor Lee?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. One of the public speakers this evening is known to me through joint membership of Godwin United Church. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Amy, have there been any questions received from members of the public?
Thank you, Chairman. None received.
Okay, thank you. Peter, are there any updates to government guidance or legislation that the committee should be aware of?
Thank you, Chairman. I don't have any specific updates to legislation, but I just wanted to update members that we've published an up-to-date five-year housing land supply statement dated 1st of January this year. We update it annually or quarterly basis, but it followed a recent appeal decision at Hewitts Industrial Estate in Cranley, which members may have seen, where our housing land supply position was challenged. And the decision of the inspector was that we would like to be in the region of more the 3.4 to 4.6 years to supply. So that was based on our July 2016 assessment. We've rolled on another six, seven months on top of that. There's been a number of additional permissions and we've looked at the evidence that supports the housing land supply assessment, and it has been republished. And the updated figure with those additional permissions in place is that we've got a 5.79 years' supply against our need. So it is updated. That is just relevant overall in terms of your determination and consideration of applications. It's obviously relevant to item A1 this evening, where housing land supply is a material consideration. And this is a verbal update overall to that application, that the reference to housing land supply position should be 5.79 years, just as an update. I'm happy to take any specific questions on the housing land supply figure and how it's assessed in terms of buffer or anything like that, or we can take that offline out of the committee if that's helpful. Just a second point to update you on. Hopefully, all will have seen or seen the headlines of the housing white paper that's come out. I confess I haven't had a chance to read the whole document as yet, but I just want to highlight a couple of headlines that are coming out and legislation and changes that we will see coming as a result of that. So one of the key headlines regarding planning fees is going to be a 20% increase on those. The mandatory starter homes requirement has now been dropped and it's more going to be a local circumstance in terms of provision. It's going to be a standard method for housing supply assessment, which is key when we're coming to appeals in terms of when we're challenged, there's a standard method for applying it. You're not getting the ambiguities and different challenges across the board, so that'll be helpful from the council's point of view. And the last point is housing delivery tests in terms of the council's delivery against requirement, and they'll be looking closely at how councils are performing against meeting their full housing need. As I say, they're very much headlines, but I thought I'd highlight them and legislation will follow. Thank you, Chairman.
Thank you, Peter. Is it possible that later on, when you've digested it, you could sort of send a briefing note round to the relevant people?
Of course, yes.
I'm thinking if you sit in there for an hour or so at the next meeting telling us any updates, and I just thought it might be easier if we had it circulated.
Very happy to do a note and as and when the legislation comes out, which I don't think will be a one bulk, we provide the update.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, Chairman.
Site visits. In the event of site inspections being necessary as a result of consideration of the applications at this meeting, these will be held on Monday 6th of March 2017 at a time to be agreed. Now, moving on to the planning applications, the first one is item A1, erection of three dwellings with attached carports at the land to the rear of 60 to 64 Turner Court, Oxford Road, Godwin, GU71RF. Chris, would you like to introduce the application to the committee, please?
Thank you, Chairman. This application seeks planning permission for the erection of three detached dwellings on land to the rear of Turner Court. This is the location plan. The application site is the land outlined in red. Oxford Road runs to the south here. The level of the land drops from Oxford Road down to the application site. Turner Court is located fronting the Oxford Road, which is a supported living property. The rear boundary of the application site, but the river, flood risk assessment has been submitted with the application, and this has been accepted by the Environment Agency, who confirmed that the site is outside of the areas of high risk from flooding and is within flood zone one. The railway line can be seen from this location plan as well, which runs further to the rear of the river. The conservation area boundary runs along the Oxford Road, and there are listed buildings close to the south of the access, numbers 68 to 72, Oxford Road are grade two listed. This is an aerial photograph of the site. You can see the railway line clearly from the photograph and also the Oxford Road and Turner Court is in the middle there where I'm highlighting. This is the block plans. On the right-hand side, you've got the proposed block plan, and on the left, we've got a recently approved development on the site. As you can see from the plan on the left, permission has been granted for two units of the same size and design and utilizing the shared access with Turner Court. Impacts on character, highway safety, flood risk, neighbouring amenities were considered to be acceptable on the scheme for two units. The proposal would move one of the units, would move units one and two closer together and would introduce a third unit to the east. The minimum separation distances between the proposed dwellings would be 7.7 metres. The third unit, which is on the right-hand side there, would be set approximately 11 metres from the boundary with Turner Court and approximately 4.9 metres off the flank site boundary. This is the proposed site plan. The application proposes a new surface and access, a new surface along the access track comprising of block pavers and also acoustic fencing along the boundary to the south with the residential properties. These are some photographs from the site. Photograph A is taken looking along the access road and towards the housing element of the application site, which is on the right there. Photograph B is taken looking into the site from the southern site boundary. It's marked on the plan on the left, and it looks towards the river. And photograph C is taken close to the boundary with Turner Court and shows the relationship with the rear of Turner Court and also the adjoining property of number 58, Oxford Road. These are the proposed elevations. They show two-storey dwellings at a height of 8.5 metres. The detailing of the front elevations will be broken up by a mixture of front gable features and dormer windows. The design remains unaltered from the consented scheme. These are the proposed floor plans. Each property would comprise of four bedrooms at first floor with kitchen, living and dining areas at the ground floor, along with a carport on the side there. This slide shows the determining issues. The matters of principle and technical opinion, in terms of the principle of development, the principle of the development of the site has been established by the consented scheme for two units. Under the other matters of technical opinion are issues of flood risk, parking access, highway safety and impacts on the quality management area and the SPA. Matters of planning judgment are on the right-hand side, and they relate to impacts on residential amenity, character and heritage. And there's one update to the report, condition 19 on page 35. Should read refuse and recycling rather than just recycling. So for the reasons set out in the officer's report and subject to the amendment to the condition, the application is recommended for approval. Thank you, Chairman.
Thank you, Chris. This is a public speaking item, and I believe that the procedure is detailed on the back of the laminated cards on your seats, and the procedure has also been explained to you. So may I first invite the objector, Ryan Kelly, to speak. Good evening, Mr. Kelly. You have four minutes from the point when you begin speaking. Press the large button, please.
The issue concerned is now the intensification of the use of this site because the planning consent has already been granted for two properties. The negative impact on the neighbouring residential amenity seems to be regarded as insignificant and features minimally in the officer's report. Sadly, in all the considerations, the word 'safety' fails to register in the officer's report. I am particularly concerned about disturbance and safety for the tenants of Turner Court, which houses adults with complex learning difficulties, disabilities and mental health issues. This will also impact negatively on other neighbours. The only access to the site is via the Turner Court car park. Up to now, this access is only used a few times a year, at most for small estate maintenance vehicles. However, the forecourt is extremely busy restricted space. It is consistently in use by tradesmen, visitors and carers attending to timed appointments in the community. The development will lead to a rise in through traffic from almost zero to a minimum of 24 movements per day. The intensification of use will create further danger, noise and disturbance. During development, the hazard of vehicles dropping mud, creating a slip and trip hazard is also a major safety issue of great concern, as has already been experienced with the site works already started to date. We have passed on case law that shows in a similar case, the court upheld that such a rise from a few movements a year to many per day would cause loss of amenity and nuisance. This is exacerbated in our case because of the health issues of our clients, and the scheme does not take into account the safety and welfare of the occupiers of Turner Court. The car park is often very full, used for through access, it is a potential choke point without turning space and is outside the control of the applicant. It's highly likely, given the constant use for access, that conflict will arise and thus lead to dangerous situations where lorries and other vehicles have no room to manoeuvre and will have to back out through the car park onto the main road in the town centre, on the main road to the town centre. This will cause issues for the occupants of Turner Court. This does not comply with policy M17. The first application was rejected due to the harmful impact of the proposed houses on the setting of the area of strategic visual importance next to a conservation area. This is unchanged since 2013. I would urge you to reject this proposal and help us to look after the health and safety of some of the more vulnerable members of our community. The conditions placed on the development do little to protect the current use. Further conditions would be helpful to limit the car park congestion issues in an attempt to minimise dangers which cannot be avoided for disabled people walking through the area. Thank you, Chairman.
Thank you, Mr. Kelly. Now, may I invite the applicant, Andrew Muntan, to speak, please? Good evening, Mr. Muntan. You also have four minutes from when you begin speaking.
Councillors, thank you for giving me this opportunity to speak this evening. Reside Developments is a local quality house boarder, which is demonstrated by us being awarded a Civic Design Award around three years ago for our scheme at the Tanners Muse in Farncombe. The scheme is very similar to the form that you recently approved for two dwellings, where the scheme overcame the previous reasons for refusal. We're now seeking one additional dwelling. The site is within the urban area, where both the NPPF and the Waverley Policies direct developments take place. The planning permission for two dwellings on this site and other developments further to the east have established a second row development on the area south of Oxford Road. This site can safely access the highway network without any changes to existing arrangements. Access to the site has not been objected to by the highways authority, either for this application or on the previous application approved for two dwellings. We are very aware of the residents living at Turner's Court and take this very seriously, and will work with the owners to ensure that their needs are fully considered. However, there is an existing right away across this land for access, which this application is utilizing. This is the same situation as already approved for the two dwellings. Anyone purchasing the properties will also be aware of the sensitivities when accessing and exiting the site, which I have no doubt will be completely understood. Traffic movements relating to three dwellings were very low and imperceptible at the road access point on Oxford Road, and I would just say we completely reviewed the 24 movements which have been suggested, and there are only six parking spaces. Ecology on the site has been fully assessed, and the scheme does not cause any harm to biodiversity on the site, which can be suitably mitigated. There are no objections from natural England or Surrey wildlife. There are no lots of trees that will open up the site to the railway line beyond this site or to any neighbouring properties. Having reviewed the flooding position, noting the site did not visibly flood, our consultants submitted data to the Environment Agency, where they have agreed that the site does not in fact flood and is therefore within flood zone one, where residential development is considered acceptable. We've reviewed the site's relationship with neighbouring properties and have incorporated acoustic, soundproof fencing and quiet surfacing materials to the access road. We note that these dwellings are more than the usual minimum acceptable distance from neighbouring properties. We've worked very closely with your heritage and design and planning officers at the council to produce a well-considered layout and elevations that both fit within its immediate landscape and also the adjoining conservation area. The streets in Oxford Road will be unaffected by this proposal. This will retain the visual appearance of the conservation area. There is already a planning permission in place for two dwellings, and the addition of a third dwelling will have no material impact on the character of the conservation area, as this additional dwelling is furthest away from the conservation area itself. This is agreed by your own heritage and design officers. The approved scheme for two dwellings proposes that the site will be served by a private refuse company. This refuse collection scheme is also proposed for this application. This will ensure that the bins will not be left on the roadside littering the street and conservation area and will also overcome concerns for accessing the site as the company has a smaller vehicle. The scheme is in excess of the National Describers Space Standards and fully comprised with the county and Waverley Parking Standards. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Mr. Muntan. Members, I open it up to you. Councillor James?
Thank you, Chairman. We were sent a very nice coloured plan by the applicant, which brought to my attention something that the officers might be... I only got mine yesterday, so I'm sorry if I sort of asked the officers before. It marks block paving everywhere. Can you assure me that the block paving is porous between all the blocks and we're not going to have a long, long access road going downhill, that all the water is going to run all the way down to the bottom, and then all the car parking area in their forecourt is tightly fixed block paving that the water doesn't penetrate? Because I think in the area it's in, in my view, but I'm not a planner and I'm not a highway agent, that I don't think that that's right. Secondly, in, I think it's condition three, which talks about, it's the site management plan, there's nothing in there, as the objector said, that there might be large lorries going in and out trying to access Turner Court, not being able to get through. Would it not be sensible to limit in the site management plan, it only talks about grit, dust and dirt, the size of the construction vehicles that can access the site? Because we're limiting the refuse lorry, you're not allowed big ones down there, so I would have thought it might be quite good when you're doing a site management plan to limit the size of vehicles that are going up and down during construction. That's my second sort of positive, which might help Turner Court. And the third one was that the applicant said that there wouldn't be a lot of traffic because there were only six car parking spaces. I don't believe that you can limit the people with those houses, not changing the green grass in the front of their house, to putting cars on it. So you couldn't limit it to six car parking spaces only. So they could have three cars each or four and park wherever they like outside the front of the house. So I'm sorry, I dispute the applicant with only six cars. Thank you, Chairman.
Thank you, Councillor James. Councillor Bolton and then Councillor Thornton, please.
Thank you, Chairman. I believe enough is enough. I thought that two was too many and three is far too much. I've had a number of representations from local residents, and this has helped me to come to my considered conclusion. I am very concerned about access to the site through the forecourt of Turner Court. In addition, the turning of refuse and delivery lorries down at the bottom of the slope, especially with three dwellings, not two, there will obviously be more deliveries down there and there's less space. I'm concerned. If two, then three, when do we stop? Thank you.
Thank you, Councillor Bolton. Councillor Thornton?
Thank you, Chairman. As the ward councillor, the same as Councillor Bolton there, agree completely what he says. And I'm going to object on the grounds of inadequate access. I mean, I wasn't for the site with two houses, and this hasn't changed my mind at all. Six car park spaces for a four-bedroomed house, now, I know in this committee, I always bang on about it, but there's not enough two-bedroomed houses for the people that live in these houses when their children grow up to live in the area. So obviously, they're going to live at home until they're in their 30s, which will actually make it probably six cars per household, which weigh over the 24 movements. And we have to look to the future on these sorts of things. I've received phone calls on a daily basis about the residents in Valley View and with the McCarthy and Stone Development up the road, the lorries parking on the road and delivering their materials, and the contractors parking in the local roads. I've received about four this week and about two last week. So, yes, I'm going to object on the grounds of inadequate access and the detrimental impact on the existing residents. Thank you, Chairman.
Thank you, Councillor Thornton. Councillor Reynolds?
Thank you. I've got one question and then I'd like to make some points, if that's okay. My question was regarding the private refuse collection. My question is, who will be paying for that? Does the residents pay for that? And obviously, they'll be aware of that when they move in and when they sell their house. New occupiers will be aware that they have to pay for private refuse collection as opposed to expecting the local council to collect their refuse because they pay council tax.
Peter, you ready to answer that?
Yes, thank you, Chairman. Thank you, Councillor Reynolds. Yes, it would be at the cost of future occupants, and that is exactly as we agreed on the previous proposal. So in terms of was there's an additional unit there, it's the same principle that was secured last time. So I think that's helpful. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Okay, to my point, I do find myself agreeing with Councillor Bolton and Thornton and indeed Mr. Kelly. I wasn't desperately keen on the first application with two units, predominantly because I think the access across Turner Court, which I agree apparently is an allowed access, but I did feel that there were some issues surrounding it and it wasn't an ideal access. But the planning application went through, so we have two houses being constructed. I think three is actually pushing it because that's actually adding 50% extra traffic movements, and that is, I think, where I would draw the line. I know the applicant is suggesting the 24 traffic movements per day is outrageous, but in fact, it actually means one person in each house going to work and back, somebody in the house dropping children at school in the morning and picking them up in the afternoon and then going shopping. And that is 24 movements of traffic, and I suspect it'll be probably more than that, not every day, I agree. But I know lots of friends who've got children and they seem to be forever taxiing their children around the county, so I suspect the movements will be a lot more than that. So that is predominantly my issue with it. I think it's the amenity and the access issues of an extra house, which is 50% increase in traffic movements, and I think I would be unable to accept that. Thank you.
Thank you, Councillor Reynolds. Councillor Lee?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Certainly had a careful read through the reside letter, which I believe we all got, and is the textual presentation of Mr. Muntan's statement to us. Listened carefully also to the public presentation by Mr. Kelly, and as a result, I've got a few observations and concerns. When I say a few, that's four essentially. And I'll come back to the report, which we have consultation sent in from the town council. It's already been said, but I'll say it again, objects on the grounds of inadequate access and on the detriment to the existing occupants of Turner Court. Now, that comes from the town council. It's an authoritative body, and an authoritative body that takes care as much as it possibly can for the residents of Godwin. It almost begs the question, if it's not going to be given added weight compared to some of the other observations, why do we waste a council's time in putting forward their observations? So I think that it has not been used strongly enough to come to the overall conclusions that the offices have. Then we've got Turner Court Car Park. When we had our site visit there, we actually had to walk to this car park because there was inadequate parking for a number of people to come, and that was existing. And I think there were four, perhaps five people, that had to walk, either from, say, the Masonic Centre in On the Lake or indeed the berries here. So that says to me that, you know, there's no spare capacity there, and it is used by staff cars and service organisations that provide services to Turner's Court. Now, even with the existing approved application, there must be a clear throughway across the car park for the benefit of these people. for the benefit of these people living in the valley. So that's going to reduce the parking spaces anyway. And in the number of times I go past there, certainly over these past many weeks, I have seen that car park full, and we end on car parking as well. So even now, it's problematic, because some of those vehicles that are, got a back-end parker, will have to find the driver and sort of get it moved. So that I find completely unacceptable really. And then we come to the access itself, Oxford Road, from Oxford Road and from the valley, so the bottom. And I am absolutely certain that we will get vehicles, whether they're small or larger, coming in from Oxford Road, and they will actually be on the car park before somebody at the bottom of the valley there, the road, they will have already started up, and so therefore there will be a problem with people, who sort of does the backing up. Well, if somebody's frozen with that car coming up, or they don't feel confident about sort of reversing back down, then the vehicle in the car park will inevitably have to back out onto the road. So again, there are safety problems and issues there. And the third dwelling, of course, is going to magnify the probability of that possibility of people sort of ending up on that access road. Then we come to the access plan drawings. They were known as TK1 and TK01 and TK02. I don't know whether there's any illustrations there, Chris, for us to have a look at. The vehicle in question, yes, is a normal-sized Veolia refuse truck. But if you're in a position to take a very careful look at that thing, there is very little room for error in going down the road or coming back up. And then if we look at the top diagram, look at that multi-point turning aspect, much greater than even the three-point, and we're talking about a large vehicle here. Okay, we've got rid of, or the applicant has got rid of, the large-scale refuse vehicle. There's other vehicles, there's removal vans, perhaps not too often, but there's removal vans. There's certainly vans coming from PC World, for example, to do deliveries, quite large. Now we're increasing over these last few years, the number of delivery vehicles, carrier vehicles and so on, all will be wanting to go down there and then come back up again. I find the whole thing a complete nightmare. And essentially, I am unable to support the officer's recommendation in this case. I wouldn't have supported the first one, but I wasn't at the planning committee then. If I did, I'd be betraying my responsibility to ensure as far as possible the wellbeing of this community. That's why I cannot support it. Others have very sensibly, and members of the planning team have indicated specific reasons which could be sort of fed back into the process. But I would say that if the committee was minded to grant this application, I personally feel it ought to be deferred. And the reason I say that is, we have absolutely no idea, other than our own sort of thoughts and so on, as to the present impact of two residencies. And I think it would be essential to get data and to understand exactly whether our fears are founded or unfounded before yet another building is built. Thank you very much.
Thank you councillor Lee. councillor Peter Martin.
Thank you chairman. I've got a number of comments to make, and I would like to ask the planners for their views after I've spoken. Then I may want to come back after that, if I may. I have to say firstly, I strongly dislike second applications of this sort. Why didn't they put an application for three in the first place? And this business of putting two in, and then, oh, let's try and squeeze another one in? It's something which I strongly dislike, and puts my back up quite considerably. However, we have to put that to one side, because that's not part... We have to consider the application we've got in front of us, and so on and so forth. But it's certainly something which I dislike. I do have a lot of sympathy for the Turner Court position. However, the fact of the matter is that there is a right-of-way across the car park. Turner Court was built with the full knowledge that that was the situation. So, you know, I think we need to bear that in mind. Having said that, when we looked at the application for two houses, I was of the view that with all of the difficulties that were there, two was probably reasonable. Taking account of all the limitations of access and so on and so forth. I have to say, three, I think, is taking it beyond what is reasonable. I note all the comments in the report, particularly on page 22, where the MPPF states that developments should only be refused on transport grounds where the residual cumulative impacts of development are severe. And the fact of the matter is, we have got planning consent already now for two dwellings, and therefore is the cumulative impact of one further house sufficient to cause us to rethink for three? And then the county highway in the third paragraph on that section, on impact on parking access and highway safety on page 22, feels that the plans are okay, and the site layout does allow for the refuse vehicle to enter and leave and so on and so forth. And of course, this is all, then gets into, well, are they right or are they wrong? And can we challenge that? So I guess that my question really is to the officers. What is, their judgment is that moving from two to three is okay? Is there a case, if we were to object to three, that would be sustainable? In a planning appeal, for instance, where three could be deemed to be too many, on the grounds that the extra one, the cumulative impact on the access road and so on and so forth is bad, and the increased impairment of visual amenity and movements across the car park and the impact on Turner's Court. Could we not build a case where three, reasonably build a case where three is too many? Could I have their professional view on whether that is likely to be, if we were minded to turn this down, whether that would be sufficient in their view to withstand an appeal? Thank you.
Hey officers, would you like to address those concerns?
Yes, thank you chairman, and thank you councillor Martin. There's sort of two aspects to that. The first is a sort of technical highway point of view and the residual impact. And there's some comments about the town council's approach on that ground as well, and why we hadn't taken it into account. So I'll address those both, if that's okay. But from a purely technical highway safety point of view, we rely on the county council to provide us with that advice. My view is that if we weren't to take that advice, we'd be in a very difficult position with, in the absence of any additional research or support for a position, contrary to the county council's position, you would struggle to make a meaningful case and justify reasons for refusal on those grounds. In terms of how they've assessed it, they have looked at that, there's permission for two. They've looked at that and what the percentage uplift in movements associated with that. And that's how they will have assessed the application and provided, come to their conclusion of no objection, subject to quite a number of detailed conditions. So my advice is that a technical grounds for refusal would be difficult to sustain. On the point of the amenity point, that is a matter of judgment for members to take into account. And if they feel that the increase in traffic movement and any additional conflict between Turner's Court, future occupants moving through that area, that is a matter for them, any noise disturbance. Officers are of the view that the increase to one additional dwelling wouldn't be so significant to warrant a reason for refusal on that grounds. But that is something I would leave members to make a decision on. There's a number of other questions, but I think I'll come back to them at the end, if that's helpful. Thank you chairman.
Certainly, thank you. councillor Wheatley. Sorry, councillor Martin, you wish to come back?
Thank you. Thank you, that's helpful. Although I have to say, I think had I seen this application in as three units to start with, I would have been probably opposed to it. So it's this wretched business of having a cumulative one, and then it's where we're comparing two versus the three, which I think is annoying and very sad. The only other point that I wanted to make is, if we were minded to approve, I do share other members' concerns on construction traffic. The Oxford Road is a very important means of access to the centre of Godalming, and in peak hours is very heavily used. I would like to see, and I propose, that if we are to, if we were to agree to this, that we could put, we should introduce a condition which limits deliveries to out of peak time periods. And also, I would want to see a limit where, I wouldn't want to see large delivery vehicles arriving, and then a little delivery vehicle going up and down the slope, taking the loads off the big one, whilst the big one was parked in Oxford Road for a long time. Something of that sort would create a major hazard, and we ought to build in conditions. I say that because I daily come into contact with the McCarthy and Stone development, and from before seven in the morning, heavy lorries are arriving, and the impact on the, on traffic is immense, and is extremely annoying. And I certainly get a lot of letters of complaint about that. So I think if we, I would like to see that condition introduced, if I may, if we're minded to approve. Thank you.
Thank you councillor Martin. councillor Wheatley.
Thank you, Mr Chairman. I had been unable to attend the site visit with everyone else, so I took myself along by myself. And when I happened to go to Turner Court, the car park was full, and they had a maintenance chappie there with his little van, blocking the access to the road down there. Which meant that to get myself off the road, I was in an awkward position. I left it there for a couple of minutes while I walked down and had a look. But to get out of it again, I think I had a six or a nine-point turn, because it just was virtually impossible to get out going frontwards. I am very concerned about this access. And we are talking about a building housing vulnerable people. And they come and go during the day. I come across quite a few of them in town. And you can't tell them necessarily, you can't go out there and there's cars coming and what have you. I am very nervous about this.
Thank you. councillor Tom Martin.
Thank you. I think we need to be very careful with regards to the access on this, because at the end of the day, there is access rights through the Turner Court car park. There is already planning permission granted for two houses. So I think if we were, if the committee were minded to go against the officers' recommendations and refuse this application, I think any reasons for refusal on the grounds of access would be, you know, we'd be in huge danger of losing on appeal, given that there is already planning permission for two houses, and given that there is already right-of-way. I too share councillor Martin senior's views of this sort of coming for a second bite of the cherry to put a third house in. And if this had been the original application, I suspect that the mood of the meeting would be very much against this. I wonder if I could get a comment from officers. If this were to be approved, and I speak through experience of these sort of larger applications, can we condition that construction traffic must be maintained on-site? And I say that very specifically because we've got a lot of developments that have happened in and around Godalming, where the construction traffic, and I mean, I'm talking about the builders' vehicles, the cars, the vans, are all kept on surrounding residential roads and clog up the roads quite considerably. And we've heard this from a few other members. And I don't think it's unreasonable, and I emphasise the words unreasonable, to expect the site to be able to house its own workers of this sort of, it's a big site. And I think if we would, if we'd had something similar on the Key site and some of the other major developments, we would have less impact, we would have had less impact on the neighboring residential roads. I wonder if that can be conditioned? Because I have mentioned it to the head of planning in the past, and she thought that perhaps in hindsight, we could have done something like that at the Key site. I'm in a very difficult position, because I think that when you look at this as the cumulative impact of the third house, does it materially affect it? It's difficult to say. If we were looking at this as a fresh application for a third, for three houses, I would be very much against this. If the two houses were implemented, there was a picture of the original application. I wonder if, you know, there's just as much likelihood that the owners of the house with the larger garden could put an application in in 10 years' time to put a small third house in that row. And at the end of the day, there is always going to be the opportunity for this to happen, whether it happens now, or whether it happens in a few years' time. You're still ultimately looking at the cumulative impact of one additional home. I'm really struggling to sort of grapple onto a really solid reason for refusal at the moment, but very much, very interested in what other members have to say. But I would like a comment on conditioning of construction traffic. Thank you.
Thank you councillor Martin. I think the officers have got a few things I'd like to address, so perhaps they can come back. I think councillor Byham wishes to speak first.
Thank you chairman. Well, I wasn't here last year when you approved this scheme, and we had our chairman's briefing on Monday, so I decided to come in a little earlier and go down and visit the site. I arrived at Turner Court, I didn't drive in, because there wasn't any room, there were all vehicles all over the place. So I actually parked half on the pavement and half over the double yellow lines. So the policeman are watching, sorry about that. I then went back, and I thought, the access must be further back. And I started walking past the houses to the left of the site. And now it clearly wasn't along there, because that was even more difficult. So I realised where I was going, went through there, and there was a car parked in the entrance, as councillor Wheatley said, when she visited the site. So I walked down a lovely lawns drive down the hill, and then I hit the mud. There's been some workings there. I was fearful of sinking into the mud. My shoes came back very dirty, and I thought, well, I'm trying to see where the river is. And I struggled around, because it's got a lot of growth there, and it looked absolutely awful. I was fearful. I just couldn't imagine why it had been approved in the first place. But that's, I wasn't here to listen to the debate, so I don't know. I didn't see the report. So I wandered around the whole site, down to the end. It was horribly soggy and wet, and of course, being on the bottom end of a slope and towards a river, the water's going to come out of the ground into that area anyway, and make it a soggy mess, even if it's not in the flood zone. The floods, the water would continue on until, of course, it hits these houses, and it will stop and have to find its way around the edges. So on the way back up, I actually helped an elderly couple who were struggling with their wheelie bin for collection, and helped them up the hill from the house on the right-hand side as you're going up the drive. So overall, I was absolutely amazed at having got an approved application for two and looking for a third. I can't imagine how it's going to work. I mean, I have difficulty in understanding it's going to work with two properties, but with three, it's, I just cannot see it. And if you look at the layout that we've got on the screen, in terms of the paved areas, the road areas, and the turning ability for vehicles there, it's a negligible amount. And we're going to have all sorts of vehicles going off the edge of the paved area and sinking into this quagmire. It really was very, very soggy and wet. There was a couple of posts that have been put in, I'm not quite sure what they were there for. Some form of testing, I think, of the ground levels or whatever, I just don't know. But as I say, I was appalled at the whole thing, and just surprised that we were even considering this. But we are where we are, and I will certainly be voting against.
Thank you councillor Byham. councillor Thornton, you wish to come back?
Thank you chairman. Just on this flood thing, I mean, I didn't touch on it earlier, but it did flood in 2013. Just on this flood thing, I mean, I didn't touch on it earlier, but it did flood in 2013 and there are houses along that river that didn't flood. And the reason they didn't flood is because that land there flooded. If you put houses there, that land won't flood anymore. So the houses further down the river are going to flood. That was just a thought that I had earlier on today. Thought to share that with everyone. Thank you, Chairman.
Thank you, councillor Thornton. Councillor Peter Martin, then I'll ask the officers to address some of the points made. Thank you.
Thank you. I would like to come back on this flooding. I understand the points, but I have to say, I'm very familiar with a number of the houses alongside the river in this area. Waterside Lane behind the, behind the, you know, the lake, for instance, are houses very close to the river in a similar position to this. I mean, it's not unusual, you put the additional drainage, the Environment Agency say it's fine. And I think we should not over, try and overestimate the risk as far as flooding is concerned. It's not a consideration for me. I don't know. Thank you.
Thank you. Officers, would you like to address the various points made? Thank you.
Yes, thank you, Chairman. I just worked through the various points being picked up. I think firstly from councillor James at the beginning, there's a comment regarding the block paving. We don't have the final details of that at this stage. If members wanted to secure the final detail of that, I would suggest an amendment to condition 13, which talks about external materials. And we could include reference within that to include details of the surface of the access road and hard standing proposed within the site. And we can secure that by condition, within the notes, we'll make a, within the minutes to make a note of the requirement that the discharge of that condition will require appropriate materials. And in terms, there was a point regarding construction management and access. We've got two conditions really that cover this. Condition three, that talks about a site management plan which relates to mud, grit, noise, so immediate locality. And then that would, should sit alongside condition nine, which talks about the method of construction statement. And that talks about parking of vehicles, unloading of plant materials and things like that.
About size?
Sorry, that's the point I was going to, I was only going to recommend on condition nine, we could add an extra requirement for the type and size of vehicles entering and exiting the site. In addition, we've got condition seven, sorry, I'm jumping around slightly, but condition seven deals with the timings of delivery. If members are happy with those timings, that might be appropriate. Alternatively, we could take away a note of what was considered or amend that condition if they considered alternate hours might be appropriate. But I would add that that was what was considered appropriate previously in terms of the requirement. In terms of the, the point regarding the construction and disruption, it is of course disruptive when building works are taking place and we need to seek to minimise that as much as possible. We can't insist upon contractors, site workers parking within the site. We can only make the best provision. They're public roads, we can't control where people park there. Obviously, where there's yellow lines and things like that, that needs to be enforced and it needs to be monitored if they're repeatedly not complying with their requirement. But where there's parking on public roads, it is a difficult matter to police as such. So what we need to do is ensure that we've got the best provision for, for the construction phase that makes it easy for those contractors to use that area. And I think those conditions and the hours of delivery hopefully cover that. Some of the other points have been picked up regarding the rights of access, but I reiterate the point that there is a right of access to Turner's Court and we had that discussion previously on the, on the earlier scheme. And they will have to ensure that that right of access is available and there would be adequate parking down once you've got into where the houses are and appropriate turning spaces. In terms of the sweat path analysis, which was on the screen, Chris will just go to it as I'm talking, but that actually models a 9.6 metre long refuse vehicle, which is a lot larger than the actual smaller one that would, would probably service the site. So whilst it does look like a, quite a contrived turning circle, that is a relatively large vehicle, which wouldn't be regular in terms of coming down here in terms of refuse and service collection. There is of course deliveries of, and couriers and things like that, but it demonstrates that it can be achieved within the site, clear of the highway, turn around and leave in a forward gear as well. And that's probably the key, key point to note. There was two other points that I just wanted to pick up on. There was one point made regarding deferral ahead of the consideration, or assessment of the previous, the approved application. My view, it'd be great if you knew the outcome and you can see that, but we've got an application before us and I think we need to determine that on that basis. I think it'd be unreasonable if we were to defer this until the construction of two houses and they're sold and lived in, which would be a considerable time. So I think as our duty, we do, do our duty to consider this application before us and just assess it on its merits based on the evidence that's been given to us. So hopefully that's helpful. Sorry, that was the last point I was going to pick up on. So hopefully that covers off any questions, but please let me know if I've missed anything.
Thank you, Peter. Councillor Tom Martin, you wish to come back and then?
Thank you, Chairman. With regards to the requirement, any conditioning of construction traffic, I accept that public roads can be used. Can we condition that sufficient parking is provided on-site for contractors? And I don't mean just two or three spaces, I mean sufficient for those workers on-site. Ultimately, if parking provision is there, then they can use that and that could be controlled by condition. You could control to make sure that that's not being used for building materials and that is available for parking of vehicles. I mean, is that something that we could put in if the committee were minded to approve this?
Thank you, Chairman. That is perfectly reasonable, so I think we can tighten up condition nine. And I'll just think of some wording now if we get to that, just to add into that. But exactly, we need to make sure that provision is available, so if they are to use it, it's available and ready for them to. Thank you.
Councillor Hunter. I was going to talk about condition nine, but that's been addressed.
Thank you. Councillor Holder.
Thank you, Chairman. My question is more of a legal one. Are we, would we be in a position to charge them a full council tax for facility which included the removal of waste by this council? And then we were unable to fulfil that council tax, would the owners of the houses then be able to request a rebate on their council tax? And if they did, then would that not be opening a precedent where anybody could opt out of council facilities and request a rebate on their council tax? I'm just wondering where we stand legally on this.
Comments?
Mr Chairman, I'm at a loss to answer councillor Holder on that one. I would have thought that a private arrangement would alleviate the prejudice of councils' ability to charge council tax as a waste collection authority, recover expenses in that regard. I don't know if I've understood the question properly.
Councillor Thornton, looks like you may have the answer.
Council tax isn't just for waste. Council tax for a lot of things, but you can't just opt out of not going to the leisure centre or things like that. So I don't, don't think, me not knowing, but I don't think anyone can opt out because they don't have their rubbish taken. I think that's just ridiculous.
Certainly, I know that when I moved into a new house, we negotiated our, what in those days were called rates, because we didn't have street lighting, so it was less than it would have been if we did have street lighting. So I would imagine that whoever moves into these houses would be able to negotiate that their council tax was...
Mr Chairman, I would imagine that the rates would be calculated on ratable value, which would be assessed by the rating, the rating office.
Okay. Well, my ratable value was considered less because I didn't have street lights, isn't it?
Indeed.
Yeah, okay. Councillor Tom Martin and then councillor Peter Martin, then councillor Reynolds, everybody wants to?
Ultimately, I was going to say council tax is non-negotiable, you have to pay council tax. Ultimately, it is, it is rated on the value of the home, if the value of the home is less, you pay less. But, but the council tax is absolutely payable on the value of your home without any ifs or buts. The only exception is that if you're, if you're entitled to a single person's discount or if you vacate the property for six months, but that's it.
Councillor Peter Martin.
Tom Martin said what I was going to say.
Councillor Reynolds.
Well, just briefly, a couple of years ago when we had the massive snow, I had a very rate resident who wanted to re-emburse on his council tax because his recycling and his waste hadn't been collected due to the snow. So I worked out he was entitled to a rebate of 50p. So it's 50p a week to collect his council tax. So we're talking about 24 pounds times three houses or two houses, depending what happens tonight. So it's not a lot of money, so I don't think they'll bother.
No doubt. You kindly took the 50p out of your own pocket and gave it to him. No, no. Councillor James.
No.
Thank you, members. Any last questions before we move on to the recommendation? Okay. So the recommendation is as set out on, ah, yes. Do we have any motions to propose amendments to condition 13? And I think, Peter, you had, we're going to come up with some additional...
I would propose all the amendments that were discussed earlier by our officers.
Three, nine and thirteen.
Okay. Is everybody happy with those amendments as we've discussed?
Very good.
Thank you. So moving on to the recommendation, as set out on page 29, that's subject to conditions one to 20, including the amendment to condition 19 regarding refuse and recycling and amendments to three, nine and thirteen, and informatives one to 15, permission be granted. Can I have all those in favour, please? And those against? Any abstentions?
There were six for, weren't there?
Can we try again? All those in favour? Six, I don't have seven. One, two, three, four, that's six, yes, okay. Six. Once again, those against.
That's eight again, Chairman.
And that's still eight, so that application is refused permission. So now we need to come up with some suitable reasons for the refusal. Sorry, can I have a motion to refuse the application first of all? Okay, councillor Bolton is refusing, proposing to refuse and seconded by councillor Lee. So all those in favour of, no, we need, we need the reasons now, yes, that's right. So can I have some reasons? Councillor Reynolds.
Well, I think my primary reason would be the loss of amenity to the residents, really by dint of the 50% increase in traffic movements across a very tight four court now. I don't know if the officers will have to phrase this, but given, given the building we are talking about, the vulnerable adults within it, I think that's, that is a fairly decent refusal condition.
Councillor Bolton, I think, wanted to...
It was, councillor Reynolds has suggested one reason, but the other would be the decrease in turning space down at the bottom of the steep slope because there are three dwellings rather than two. So that makes traffic movements down at the bottom more difficult.
Thank you. It might, may be worth noting that access wasn't given as a refusal for the first application for three houses, but perhaps the officers can speak to that. Councillor Thornton.
Mate, with the councillor Reynolds, maybe objection on the grounds of inadequate access for three dwellings and maybe overdevelopment.
Officers, comments, please.
Thank you, Chairman. I think there's, there's three sort of reasons that have been tabled or put forward. I think the first one, I think, to deal with, which was raised with regards to the intensification of the use and the conflict with Turner's Court. I would suggest on page 14 of your agenda, there's a previous reason for refusal that was referred to and the proposed development by virtue of its intensification of the existing access track. And I'd suggest removal of insufficient mitigation in terms of noise would result in a form of development detrimental to the amenities of the existing dwellings in particular. And I think we should make reference specifically to Turner's Court because that is the point that's of concern and would harm the residential amenity of those, or that property or that residence. In terms of the inadequate access, I'll come back to the point I raised on a sort of technical and highway point of view, where the county council have found that to be acceptable. And we have got to, look, I accept that's a point of judgment for members to make, but on a technical ground, I feel I should say that we need to follow the advice of the County Highway Authority on that. We, I don't believe we've got a technical ground for refusal to warrant putting an additional reason for refusal on those grounds. So it may be something for members to consider or discuss. In terms of the third point, the overdevelopment of the site, that again is a matter for members. We could put some reasons for refusal around or the proposal by reason of the number of units, layout would result in maybe a cramped form of development or out of keeping with the area. But I would again ward away from that turning point where it's been demonstrated on screen where a large vehicle can turn. So we've got two reasons for refusal, I would recommend. The first one, an amendment to reason two, which I'll read out full in a minute after members' comments, and an amenity, overdevelopment type reason for refusal. Thank you, Chairman.
Okay, there was reason number one on the 2012 application, scale, form, layout, design, et cetera, that could probably be adapted without reference to refuse and recycling collection. I think councillor Bolton wished to add...
Thank you, Chairman. It was just, I don't disagree with the Highways Authority comment about access, but surely that is access from the main road and their jurisdiction only goes presumably from the main road on to the start of the road down to the site. But I stand to be corrected. Councillor Martin wishes to.
Any further comment, Peter?
The only point I would add is that we've got a technical sweat path analysis which demonstrates that it can be achieved. The county council do look at that as an overall in assessing the application. So it would be helpful to read the reasons for refusal as a further comments.
Thank you. Councillor Peter Martin.
I was just going to say, as far as access is concerned, members may wish to consider the Wheeler Lane application, which we considered down in Whitly, where there was a very constricted access, not dissimilar, I mean, in terms of width and so on and so forth. And we had a lot of concern about that and that access, of course, was on, on the land itself. So County Highways is not only concerned with access on to the road, it's also concerned with the access deeper in.
Thank you, councillor Upton.
From what we've heard this evening about the visits to this particular site, what bothered me is the policing of this because it's all very nice having a sketch of how they're going to drive round, but from what we've heard this evening, nobody's been going to be able to drive round because the amenity of the site has been used up by delivery vans, people visiting the home and people that work in the home. I can see great problems. I can understand the two properties, but it's exaggerating the situation by adding a third property, as far as I can see.
Thank you. Peter, have you come to any further conclusions on reasons for refusal, please?
Thank you, Chairman. I think we've got two that hopefully members, well, picks up on the members' comments. So the first one is the sort of design point, proposal by reason of its scale, form, layout and number of dwellings would result in material harm to the visual amenities of the area resulting in overdevelopment of the site. Proposal would thereby conflict with policies D1 and D4 of the local plan 2002, policy TD1 of the draft part one local plan and paragraph 64 of the MPPF. So that'd be reason one. And reason two, the proposed development by virtue of its intensification of the existing access track would result in a form of development detrimental to the amenities of existing dwellings and in particular Turner's Court and adjacent, and the adjacent residential institution by reason of noise disturbance, sorry, I'm going to delete that, apologies, get rid of that, by reason of conflict between users and proximity and would therefore be contrary to policies D1 and D4 of the local plan 2002 and paragraph 17 of the MPPF. Apologies for the slight confusion there.
Councillor Bolton, you have a final comment?
It's not a comment about the actual proposal. I found on the internet and answered the question, why should I pay council tax if my rubbish is not being collected? And the quote is, the law does not permit customers to withhold payment of their council tax because they are not happy with the service provided, stop. Council tax is a statutory tax paying for a range of local services, which I think was councillor Tom Martin's point, and not only all facilities, not only rubbish... And not only all facilities, not only rubbish and recycling. So there's, the law does not permit a rebate or anything like that. Thank you.
Thank you for that advancement in our knowledge, councillor Bolton. So subject to the reasons given by Peter just now, may I have those in favour of the recommendation to refuse this application? So we have resolved to refuse that application, at which point I will bid you good night and hand over to councillor Byam. With me next, Amy.
Well, members, good evening. Perhaps we can get on, thank you very much. This is obviously becoming a regular routine of, of the chairman dealing with a very difficult one and the vice chairman on his learning curve to look after the smaller applications. So we have... So we have item B1 WA 2016 2469, which is the erection of a garden outbuilding at Chestnut Cottage, Salt Lane, Godoming, GU84DH. So could the officers please introduce this item?
Thank you, chairman. Members, the application site is a Chestnut Cottage residential property. This application outline in red here, just off Salt Lane in Godoming. Proposal is for an outside garden, outbuilding for the garden at Chestnut Cottage. Proposal in red, just behind the existing garage. Here's a site photograph showing the existing garage here. Actually where the blue tarpaulin is, is where the proposed outbuilding is proposed to be. This is proposed elevations. It's going to be a typical timber clad building with a felt pitched roof. Sorry. So it's a timber garden outbuilding. You're noting in the report, the site is within the green belt and technically inappropriate development. And that the actual, the application needs planning permission because it is to the side of the existing dwelling. And therefore an outbuilding is not technically allowed under permitted development rules in an area of outstanding natural beauty such as this. However, you'll see, officers, the very specific circumstances for that is one of the fullback position with permitted development elsewhere in the garden. So with the matters of judgment in this case, it is one of the green belt issue and the normal design, visual impact and impact on resident amenity. Also, members, you'll note in the update sheet, we had one letter of representation from a neighbour and also comments from the Hamilton Parish Council have come in. And so therefore, chairman also recommends permission be granted, subject to conditions set out in the report. Thank you.
Thank you very much. councillor Tom Martin?
I was simply going to say, I look, see, this is a very minor application. I'm entirely comfortable with it and I suggest we go straight to a vote.
councillor Thornton, are you going to say anything more? You're squalling my whole evening, you realise that? So can I have a formal agreement, please? Just be approved. Thank you very much. And we have no other further things to deal with. So thank you very much and good night.